I'll to order the January 22nd meeting of the Los Alamos Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chair O'Reilly.
Here.
Vice Chair Self-Filcanic.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade, absent. Commissioner Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
And Commissioner Lo.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to open the floor to oral communications. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to come forward and speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please come forward and sign in and do so. All right, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close oral communications, and we will move on to Agenda Item 5, Planning Commission Reorganization.
So, yeah.
You're the secretary in this case, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, at this point, it gets handed over to the secretary, and she handles this part.
So, at this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for Chair. After nominations, I will close the nominations, and a roll call vote will be taken in the order received. Are there any nominations for the Office of Chair?
I'll nominate Wendy Gross for Chair.
I was going to nominate Victor Self-Filcanic for Chair.
I'm going to nominate Commissioner Andrade.
Oh, wait. Hold on.
I think Victor should be Chair.
Are you Vice Chair? Well, Victor's Vice Chair, whatever. We could nominate Andrade.
We did that to Riley.
I'll second Victor's Andrade.
So, instead of Gross, you want?
Victor.
Victor.
Or Larry.
Larry.
Larry, right?
Yeah. For Chair.
So, I will start with Victor's, and then if we all agree on that, then that'll be the first one.
We have a second for Larry as the Chair at the moment. Do you want to take a roll call?
For Larry.
Correct.
Got motion, Larry. We have second Larry.
I second Larry.
So, Larry, it is it? Okay, so I'll do a roll call. So, there being no further nominations, the nominations are closed. Please vote for Commissioner Andrade for the Office of Chair. Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Self-Filcanic.
Yes.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Yes.
Commissioner Lo.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
And Commissioner Quilty.
Yes.
There you go. Okay, so motion is carried. So, congratulations to the Chair, Andrade.
Sure.
So, I will turn this over.
That's what happened.
Well, he's not here, so I'll do the Vice Chair as well. Okay. So, at this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair after...
Oh, I'll nominate Victor.
Oh.
I nominate Wendy, Commissioner Gross.
That's fine.
I'll withdraw mine.
So, are we agreeing with?
I'll second the nomination for Wendy Gross.
Okay. All right, so it'll be Commissioner Gross. Okay, so there being no further nominations, the nominations are closed. Please vote for Commissioner Gross for the Office of Vice Chair. Commissioner Riley.
Aye.
Commissioner Self-Filcanic.
Yes.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Aye.
Commissioner Lo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Quilty.
Yes.
So, the motion is carried.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now I think you get to run the meeting.
That's what I thought. See what happens when you vote for the guy not here? No, I'll sit here, thank you.
Do you want the?
No, I'm good, you can use it.
Let me know what you want me to do with it.
Okay. First off, thank you for the vote of confidence, and next, the approval of the minutes for December 18th. Do I have a motion of approval?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Right. Have a first and a second, or DeBolt seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposed?
Motion passed.
No consent counter, public hearing. I'll move this over to the Planning Department.
Vice Chair Gross and members of the Planning Commission, conditional use permit... Let me turn this on here. Conditional use permit 1904 is the consideration of a permit for a medical office on a parcel in the General Commercial Zoning District, which is on an arterial street. Excuse me. The applicant is here with us tonight, Dr. Ward Henry. He's a gentleman in the gray there. Dr. Henry submitted an application for an approval for his chiropractic office at 10676 Los Alamos Boulevard, and a CUP is required for medical offices on parcels with the Los Alamos frontage because it's an arterial. And the proposed use as a medical office would fill a 980-square-foot unit in the center plaza shopping area, which is where the roof ditch and ale house is. And with the exception to parking demand, medical uses typically have minimal impact on a center, and it's likely that if it were there, the patients and employees would frequent the stores on either side of it, and it would be positive that way. But that said, medical uses generally require more parking than retail in most buildings. And for instance, this use would require five spaces for medical use, and four spaces is what it would require as a retail use in a building that was not a shopping center. Shopping centers, if they're over 30,000 square feet, they're 1 to 250, unless it's a CUP, then you do, as part of your CUP, use it as information toward deciding on the issue. The last medical applicant for this center provided the Planning Commission with a parking study in 2016. You have that in your reports. And the report concluded that there was one surplus space at that time, and that space was used by Los Algem to support their ability to expand a couple, a few months back. And so, as far as that report is concerned, there are times in the day when the center is full, as far as parking is concerned. And yes, the center is short spaces according to our code naturally, and that's why we had them do the parking study before. Also, the general plan encourages medical office activities to be located in proximity to the Los Alamos Medical Center campus and along Cotella and in the medical overlay zone, which is above, where the, north of the medical center campus. And this center plaza is a busy shopping center for Los Alamos, and it historically has been home to many small local businesses, and we've been trying to encourage small local businesses to fill these tenant spaces. And the one thing to keep in mind is that once established, medical offices rarely do change back to retail. They tend to stay that way. And with the parking situation and the negative general plan finding that staff recommends denial of CUP 1904 unless contrary information is received during the public hearing tonight. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of the staff? No questions? I'm going to open it to the public. Would the applicant like to come forward, introduce himself, and provide us some information, please?
I have an addendum. I call it Addendum A, which is an evaluation of the information that was contained in the January 2016 parking study, which Mr. Oliver refers to. And I have a CV, and I have a copy of a page that I gave to the other inhabitants, the other businesses in the area where this office is proposed. Did you include that?
Yes, that was in the...
Oh, good, and I don't have to pass these out. All right. I'm Ward Henry. I'm a chiropractor. I've been practicing here in Los Alamos since 1992. My office was originally on Cotella. That got too expensive. I moved to Florista. Was there for 16 years, and then that building became untenable, and this space we found. And I'll tell you this, Mr. Oliver was straight up from the minute we started talking to him, so I don't have any issues with the way he presented this. I've gone through this agenda report, and I know he recommends the denial of the conditional use permit a couple of times. And I've noticed that when he just did his presentation, that he discusses the idea of there being a parking problem, and the fact that there's actually only one available parking place at certain times of the week. I would like to address a couple of things. First of all, I'm not the first medical office to come in there. There's a dental office there right now, so apparently they must have done a CUP. The second thing, I'm just going to go through this because it'll help me to keep track of what I'm talking about. The proposal here is to improve parking traffic, all right, and increase the parking spaces availability, not make a problem with it. There are a couple of references during Mr. Oliver's submission that, I'm going to use the word nuisance because he does, and I guess it's the best one we can all understand, of the fact of creating a parking problem with my office there. I'm going to give you another interpretation of the same information. The parking study done in 2016 points out that we're down to one parking place, but we're only down to one parking place throughout the three survey days at 1:00 in the afternoon and Friday at lunch. Okay? So, if the prior use of my space, the one that I would like to have, is retail, that is then inclusive in those numbers. My office isn't open at 1:00 on Friday afternoon. It closes at 12:00, and we don't take any more patients until 2:30. So, you actually numerically can deduct the four or five spaces that my office is supposed to contribute to the parking problem. It actually gives you four or five spaces that you normally wouldn't have if a retail space was there. Is that... Am I making this clear so far? Somebody nod? Thanks. Okay. So, as far as a parking problem goes, it's really not... Yes, the space doesn't, the area doesn't have a lot of parking, but when we get down to numbers, my office does not create a nuisance. It doesn't worsen, it actually improves the tight times when there are a few parking places because my patients aren't taking them, and I'm not taking them. The second thing I'd like to point out in what you've got, if we did this, but this, which is, please sign below if you acknowledge the following is true, there has been no change or effect on the traffic pattern in this business center with the inclusion of the new office at 10676. There are 16 spaces. Three of the people were never in their office, so I couldn't get them to sign it, but we got 12 people to sign it, saying it's no big deal. So, whatever the parking study said, real life says that my office being there doesn't really have any impact at all in any kind of perceived parking problem. All right? And I believe that's in the stuff that you gave them? It is? Good. All right. So, this is how it reads, right? Analysis of the site's peak parking requirements using the City Parking Code and Urban Land Institute Shared Parking Methodology, whether your municipal code is the 1726. On page five of that parking study, okay, the summary of findings, the survey data, shared parking demand analysis indicates that the peak parking requirement for Los Alamos Center Plaza during a typical weekday, they picked Thursday, totals 93 parking spaces. There's 106. So, on Thursday, it's not an issue, all right? The peak parking during a non-typical weekday, which was Friday, is 105 parking spaces. And there's only 106, so they had one spare, and that one spare was apparently incorporated into the expansion of Los Algem, and that's great. But I don't have any patients or any employees parking during that time, so instead of 105, we're down to 100, and we actually have six available parking spaces at the busiest time of the week, which is 1:00 on a Friday. So, as far as parking goes, I don't think that my office being there really has much of an impact negatively on the available parking. During the survey, 10676, which is the address of the space that I have, was a commercial space, open and conducting business. In other words, it was participating in the parking usage. Again, my office doesn't do that. I'm not there at 1:00 in the afternoon, or I'm not seeing patients at 1:00 in the afternoon. So, the other thing says that actually my office being there improves it. If indeed the space was utilized as a retail space, you're back to this one space available at 1:00 on Friday, which is the only time that the parking study found there to be a real problem, all right? And then, me. Chiropractic office has been in business in Los Alamos since 1992. I volunteer with the Los Al High School Griffins Track and Field Team, the football program, the volleyball program as a sports injury consultant, training, fitness advisor, and exercise physician. All of my children went to Los Al schools from '85 to 2012. They have or had school track records, academic awards, and non-academic achievements. I work with notable professional athletes. My contacts with professional teams, when they're in my office, actually promote Los Alamos. You've got a nice city. I mean, there's a reason. And so, my people that come in from whoever, you know, the Ravens, or the Jets, or whoever I'm working with, are then exposed to and become aware of the fact that Los Alamos is here, and what a nice place it is. I worked as a team physician for Cal State Dominguez Basketball, Baseball, Long Beach College Basketball, Volleyball, Saddleback College Basketball, where they won the state championship, when I happened to be the team physician, and Cal State Northridge Basketball before they got rid of the coast that they have there. As a side note, in the 10676 address, two of the six parking places in front of where my proposed office is are disabled, which means that, for the most part, they're not utilized except by people coming to see me, all right? So, I think I addressed Mr. Oliver's evaluation. I think that he was good, he was fair, he did bring up the fact that people visiting me and coming to see me, by the way, I treat Mr. Murphy and his wife, and I also treat Rigo Ramirez, who was the past mayor of Cypress, and I guess is going to be the mayor again. So, apparently, what I do is accepted and enjoyed. I brought with me Mr. Garcia from Keller Williams, who showed me in a tense that he understands, I don't, about how the need for a conditional use permit came about. He explained it to me. I understood the words, but not the intent. I also brought a coach that I worked with for 12 years, who is Coach Nathan Howard, the coach for Los Alamos Track and Field. And I brought Chris Pettigrew as a typical student athlete that I volunteered my time to help. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
Have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm new to this, and I'm nervous.
That's all right. Just, so, you're not seeing patients between 12 and 2:30.
Right.
Correct? Okay. How many people do you... Besides yourself, how many other staff?
I have a doctor that's there twice a week. He's with the Chargers, and so he just sees them, and I have one office staff.
And do they leave the site between...
She does.
To free up the spaces?
She does. She volunteers at the search.
Okay, so one of the three spaces that you occupy would be freed up?
Yes.
Between that time?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, does the last patient you see before noon, do they leave at noon, or does that carry on past 12? I mean, it's 12 your last appointment.
I'm sorry.
And so then, the patient's there until 12:30 or 1:00, or...
I'm with patients routinely 15 or 20 minutes at a time, so if we pick up a patient at 12, they're gone by 12:15.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You bet. Can I...
I was going to ask if anybody would like to come forward and speak, but please limit your comments to five minutes.
My name is Dan Garcia. I'm a real estate broker that helped him find this space. So, I just wanted to address you, tell you about what the process was of finding this space. We looked in the medical zones for medical office buildings and maybe single freestanding buildings that would probably accommodate his chiropractic practice a little bit better than being in a shopping center. But there just wasn't anything available. And for him, he needs patients to have elevator access. They can't go upstairs because most of the people that he handles are people that are suffering sports injuries. So, for him to be on a lower level is very important. And the space that we found, the one that's in question here, had been vacant for about a year and a half. The owner was excited about having him there. So, I just wanted to explain that, you know, it's not that we weren't looking in medical zones, it's just that there wasn't anything available that would suit his chiropractic practice. And he was in a frantic situation at that point because the reason that he's leaving his prior place in Los Alamos is because there was mold and mildew and other hazardous effects inside that building. So, he needed to move for health reasons. So, I just wanted to let you know that I think that Dr. Henry would be a really good addition to that center. He doesn't really impact it, as he's explained to you, in terms of the parking. So, that's all I have to say. I think, please consider him. He's an institution in Los Alamos, he's already been here for 26 years. He might have to move out if he doesn't find a space, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
As Dr. Henry said, I am Nathan Howard. I'm the head track and field coach, former cross-country coach at Los Alamos High School, and I've known him ever since 2001, when I took the job. He's treated several of our athletes. He's a friend of the program. He's kept me off the operating table through several sports injuries I've had from playing football in college and that. So, he is the doctor I send athletes to and has treated athletes free of charge to help them out in order to get them back to the point that they're able to compete and keep them healthy. So, I would ask that you reconsider this and grant the application. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Christopher Pettigrew. I've been going to Doc Henry since 2004, 2005, when he would train our team, when he would service our team. I also went to him in college for a couple teams, and I just recently went to him. I had an accident, and he helped me with my case. Let's see. I also think that his office wouldn't take too much parking space, too, because, one, with the proximity his to Los Al, kids would be able to walk to there and get their treatment instead of having their parents have them to drop them off and wait for them there. So, it'd just be a lot easier for them, the parents would come pick them up after the treatment's done, let's not take them more spaces. I'm going to continue to go down, I'm going to continue to reference people to him. Most of the people I know are from around here. I have a tad of Los Alamos, 24-hour fitness. I let a lot of people know about that. He's a great proximity. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Should I close this now, or, excuse me? Do you have a question?
Can we ask the Realtor to come back up, please?
Okay.
Hi, thank you. Question, you said you did a search for office space for Dr.?
That's correct.
Was this the only place you found, or the best place you found?
Well, typically, when you're searching for properties, you give the client a choice of several different places. He wanted to stay in Los Alamos. I was showing him properties that were in other cities, but his preference was to be here, wasn't to be anyplace else.
Well, I'd like him to stay here also. So, my question is, I can narrow my question, were there any other available spaces in Los Alamos that would meet his requirements? In other words, were there some others that, this is just the best one? Is there alternatives for him?
Well, this is the one that he prefers.
I understand that, but my question is, is there any other places in Los Alamos that would...
There's available spaces in medical office buildings. When I say medical office buildings, I mean places where you have to walk in, get on an elevator, and go upstairs, or maybe they don't even have an elevator.
Right, I understand the need for first-floor space, and I was basically wondering if there's other spaces that would meet his needs in the city.
We're concentrating on this right now. There's always spaces that come up.
Right.
You know, as time goes on. It's never static.
Okay.
But we've been focusing on this, so we haven't really looked at anyplace else. I think he's found the place that he really wants to be in.
Understood. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant, or anybody else? Okay, so I'm going to close the public meeting and bring it back up here. Anybody have any questions?
I have one question for staff, and that is, a chiropractic office is similar, of the same nature, as a doctor's office, a medical office?
Correct.
It's considered that in our... Considered the same.
Yeah. Yeah.
I have a question for staff. Am I correct in believing that the dental office the doctor mentioned was the one that we allowed because it was around the back of the complex in a site that was not really...
Correct. And they brought this, they did this parking report as well.
Even with the report, we were going to deny it before the fact that they were located in the back of the...
Correct.
...complex where there's very little retail...
Yeah.
...access, right?
I think that's true. I don't have that right in front of me. Let me look.
It's...
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll go over to you.
Right.
Yeah, back there. Is there any vacancies back there, Tom?
No, not right now. There's, I've given you a list of all the different businesses that are in the building that was sitting on your table when you came in, and there's a...
Just the one right there.
Yeah, just...
Smallest.
Yeah.
So, the site, the location is the smallest... How long has it been vacant?
Not very long. Do you happen to know how long that's been vacant?
They mentioned a year and a half.
Yeah.
I don't think it's been...
That's what they mentioned.
Okay.
Year and a half.
Yeah, I haven't checked on that, so...
What was it? No, that was the Nutra...
Nutrazone or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was Nutrazone.
Oh, okay.
So, question for staff. So, given, given the parking issues at this site, I mean, you know, anytime I've gone in there, I, I feel like I can't even park in there, the spaces are so small, right?
Right.
I usually end up parking on the street or something, something like that, or just going somewhere else, to be honest.
Small spaces.
What could go in there and?
A retail shop, you know, that sells things.
Isn't it underparked even for retail?
Uh, it, if, if you're following the code exactly, yes, but if, if you're following park, the parking analysis that we agreed through CUP in the past was the parking for the building based on the report, it's, it's enough for retail right now and no more extra spaces. But, you know, there are times of the day, yes, when there are empty spots in the building, I mean, in the parking, and, but, this is also not just a chiropractor's office too, this is a doctor's office being able to be, this rides with the land.
Sure.
And, so, it's, it's not a, a, we could put in the, the resolution that he be closed between 12 and 2:00 or something like that, but that's, that, that, it's really doctors' offices that we're approving to go there, so.
Yeah, and I think there's something I'd like to say for the applicant's benefit. Decisions like this are, are difficult because, because oftentimes we get applicants who have really good character, good businesses, and we would love to have them in, in the city, right? But, the decision we're being asked to make isn't something that's based upon the character of the applicant or even the quality of the business, it's a, it's a land use decision. So, is this an appropriate use for that site, right? So, so we kinda have to take the, you know, the, the great asset you are to the community out of the equation, because you won't be in that site forever, and the decision we make today runs with that site. So, that's kinda, I just want you to be aware of that, and that, that creates a very challenging, you know, situation for us up here when we have to make these kind of decisions.
Can I say something?
Not yet.
Yeah, I just wanna follow up with what Commissioner Riley said and kind of address the commission, but also, the doctor can hear me. Yes, this isn't about the character of the individual or the business, we're, we're gonna set this up for a use that's gonna run with this land in perpetuity, so if the doctor moves on, we have now set this space up as a medical office, and we're hoping he stays in, in the city. But, I'd also like to just point out for the record, when he took us to summary facts and conclusions, page five, paragraph three, and talked about five, 106 spaces, 105 spaces, section two directly above that talks about there being a deficiency of 20 spaces already. So, we're starting at a negative already. So, even if your math is correct, and it is, but we're already, we're already negative 20 with the parking study. So, I just wanted to put that on the record. For whatever decision we make, it's not based on the character of the doctor or his practice, it's based on the use of the land.
Does anybody, any other comments from up here?
I have another question for Tom. When we redid the general plan, I believe we were talking about Los Alamos Plaza, what percentage is allowed to be?
When it's, when it's a doctor's office, it's a CUP issue, when it's a, a, a regular office, like, for instance, there's an escrow office there and a, some other office, CPA, those are regular offices and those are, you can have up to 15% of those types of offices, but a medical office, since it's a different type of use and requires more parking, it's a CUP, and as part of the CUP, you can decide whether or not it's appropriate for that spot.
Right, 'cause, I mean, they're already at 10% medical now.
Right.
Plus the CPA and the escrow place.
Right.
Which is higher than we want the retail zone to be.
Right.
I'll just make a comment that, you know, one of the issues that we have here in Los Alamos is, is our high concentration of medical uses and our low concentration of retail uses. So, we're constantly being asked to give away more retail space, more retail space, more retail space. We almost had some retail space over here, and that was taken away from us, so unfortunately, we're in a situation where the retail zones are getting smaller and smaller and smaller. And, you know, one of the things that we have to do is try to protect that retail zone, you know, unfortunately, even though we like to have uses go in there, for people that we like to be, to go in these spaces is, but, over the long run, they're all, they're all becoming medical uses.
Without to get, just apart from the parking, the parking is, for me, is sufficient, but, just to touch on what Miriam was talking about, I mean, I, I contacted Tom earlier today to find out the percentages, I referred, I just referred to as non-retail use, however, and he explained the difference, but, I do believe in the last, the update that we just went through, we, I thought we addressed that same issue of, of non-retail. We, we, I thought we broadened that, the, the definition from just office use to a, to a broader, to, to encompass.
Yeah.
I thought.
Yeah.
And I'm, that's, that's just something that I think we need to.
To think about, yes.
To go back and review.
Right.
And, and see what, what was there, that's just, for me, it's not an issue, in this instance, the issue is the parking, and I, that's enough, as far as I'm concerned, to hang my hat on, I mean, because we are, there is a complete, the whole site is deficient, and then, what Commissioner Riley was talking about, that this is a, it's a use decision that, that goes beyond the applicant, it, it, it just, it just locks in, locks in that space, in that building, as a, as a medical alternative forever.
Any other questions?
Just real quick, Tom, what are the requirements from those that are tenants there of their employees? Where are they all parking?
Yeah, I, I've not followed them to see where, where they park. I, I do see some restaurant employees that park in the neighborhoods and then walk over there. I have seen that, but not, not a lot of experience with looking and seeing who's, where people are going. And then, there's possibly people from the, the high school parking there, 'cause we have time limits on the streets now, so people have been, kids have been pushed into parking lots for that, so, yeah.
Any way to get the landlord to do an analysis of who is parking and where he's having him parked to for his tenants? That might be something to look at, to ask him. Make it a little easier for us making these decisions.
Is that something?
I think that would have to come from the applicants or the people that want to be in there, not necessarily from the city. I'm not sure if the city would wanna get involved.
It might be something that they might wanna do, or something.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure that that topic has come up before, but it doesn't, I mean, even if the employees weren't parking on the site still.
Yeah, I know, it's very, I, I'm there once a week at least, and I can't always find parking, so. Any other questions?
There was something in the audience.
Do I have a motion?
No, I think it was somebody.
Oh, I'm sorry, I reopen up the public hearing, somebody wanted to come forward.
I, I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, as a commercial real estate broker, we find that retail is dwindling for the most part anyway. So, mom and pops that would normally occupy a space like that are few and far between. And anybody that would be a national chain, national credit tenant is not gonna go in there. So, you know, I know cities want to have a lot of retail, but retail's disappearing, it's all going online. So, that's, that's the only comment I have.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any other comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to the deny the CUP.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry. Okay, staff reports? None? Move on to items from the community development? I have nothing. Any commissioner reports?
Nope.
Okay. I do have a question, Tom. We have a banner that's been on the building again for quite some time over Bloomfield and Cotella regarding lice. Are they not gonna be putting up a sign?
So.
It's under Dr. Poe's business?
Right, yeah, so that building has that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll check on that.
It's like a temporary sign.
That's been up for a long.
They, they used to have a sign there, yeah.
While we're talking about that building, for the 10th time, I'm gonna bring up that place upstairs where all of their windows are covered with advertising.
Yes. I, yeah, we'll talk to Javier about it, he's the code enforcement officer. But, from what, yeah, it's, it's tough to say that they're selling what's in the window inside, or that it's their business necessarily, 'cause it's, isn't it just people, pictures of people?
I don't know, I just think you.
That's why I could see.
We have to have something that we can hang our hat on and, and possibly, you know, we'd have to take them to court if they disagreed. So, it's, it's, it's not got like meat on sale for, for $2.50. It's not exactly that, it's more of a.
People.
They call it a shade.
Is it a, what kind of business is it? It's not a plastic surgeon, but, skin, sometimes some type of skin thing, and they're basically adverse, you know?
Right, well, it doesn't say, you know.
Right.
Laser.
Imply, yeah.
It's probably a nespetition.
So, I will talk to Javier about it and tell him to keep researching.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Commercial speech?
You know, I don't wanna make a comment on this without having to see the display we're talking about and reviewing what our sign comes with.
As he gets wise.
I have another question on the massage place right here at Florista and Los Al Boulevard. I've noticed that you can't see in now at night, again, so that's become a big problem.
Yes.
And they know that?
Yes, they should know that, yeah.
And I have one more question. In the Bonds parking lot over there on Tuesday and Thursday afternoons, the parents of these students for Kuma, they will park in the aisles, not in the stalls, but they will literally park and will not move. And I recently was so fed up because I could not get around to get where I wanted to go, that I actually got out of my car and went to take, and they literally floored their car to get out of there.
Yeah.
And I still got a picture.
Yeah, those, those businesses can have them tow.
Can they do that?
They, they need to, they should put up signs that say it with.
They should request their people to park in stalls.
Uh, yes, that's, that's true.
Is there any way we can send a letter to them, asking them to?
That would be, yeah.
Remind? Something?
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk with our code enforcement officer about.
Somebody is gonna get.
You have to park in stalls, that's what you have it marked as.
Yeah.
I gotta think that's part of their parking requirement.
Yeah, it's, it's mostly, yeah.
You should put that on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that.
Well, you know, they, they had a CUP for renovation.
Yeah.
Came to us about, I'm sure, right?
Kuma?
No, the center, the whole center. Why go out, the business, you can't go out with the business, the business, the owner, the landlord.
The center every sliver, this is the Bonds one we're talking about, every sliver along there is owned by a different person. That's, that's one of the situations. Yeah, the, there's, Bonds owns their building, Bank of America owns their building, and then, there's a group that owns three of the, the spots there, and then the rest are singly owned, and then Jack in the Box and Wendy's are owned by another group.
Wow.
That, they each own a sliver of the parking.
Really?
Is this okay for me to talk about?
Well, I was, I don't wanna get too far, I don't wanna get too far, I don't wanna get too far afield, but, well, that, that, that's an interesting.
Yeah.
The renovation, they renovated the whole center.
Uh, they painted the whole center.
They put up, no, it was a facade, wasn't it?
No.
They did that on Bonds.
They did Bonds.
Bonds.
Yeah, they did Bonds.
The rest needs it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jody was the one.
Yeah. So, it's, there's, there's a lot that goes on to, to make things change in that center because of so many owners, yeah.
And what's going in Keller Williams, do we know?
Uh, it will be nail shops. So, it's a new concept where the owner of the, the building will have ownership over the whole building, but he will rent rooms that are like their own business in there. So, each, each nail shop person will have their own like business with a door they can open and close.
That's very common.
Yeah, yeah.
Only nails, he's not doing hair or nothing in there?
I'm sure he'll rent to whoever comes, yeah, so.
That's gonna be different.
Yeah. It's, it's a new concept, uh, Phoenix Salons, I think, does that? We've checked into it, and I think that's one of the ones we saw that's like it, so, yeah.
I wonder how the nail salon right there by them feels about that?
Uh, one of them just closed.
Yeah, I saw that, the hair salon did, yeah.
Yep, so.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments?
Um, no.
No? Thank you, thank you for the vote of confidence and close meeting.